With gathering, printing and sorting email public comment. The city has instituted a three P M cutoff the day of a Wednesday city council meeting for email public comments. This is to ensure that there is sufficient time to gather and present the email comments at the city council meeting. Any comments received after the three P M deadline will be included in the public comment record will not be read at the meeting. Thank you.
Does anyone here want to speak at this time? The matter's not on the agenda. See, no one. Is there anyone online?
Let me give Zoom participants a moment to raise their hand. And not seeing any, no requests for comment.
Wonderful. I will close public comments and we will bond with the city manager's support. Acting City Manager Ray.
Thank you, Mayor. We're congratulations to the Chinese Pub Samurino first ever Lunar New Year event. At the Lacy Park. It was about thirty six hundred entries that day. City staff, public works, least part of the entire party. There are two, next slide agenda. There are two surveys on the Samurino website. One survey is for the public to comment on priority initiatives presented to city council. And that we presented at a town hall meeting on Monday. Also, there's a second survey related to the city manager recruitment. Interested in hearing from residents on what exactly they're looking for. Upcoming events. We do have a community forum. For city manager recruitment. That's an opportunity for the public to come out. We have two opportunities Thursday, February twenty third, Thursday, March sixteenth. And that will be at the bathroom, the Crow Public Library, if you're interested. As is council to, to hear your comments. Budget dates, these are important dates in the development of the budget. I won't read them. As you can see, we have intensive schedule. Till we get to budget adoption, it really makes your comments on the priority initiatives and any public comment related to budget. I did wanna. I did wanna also point out, this will be mailed out to residents. In the impacted area, and also be on the city website. Based on our pavement, repave and schedule. This Saturday, February eleventh, eastbound Huntington will be paved between Virginia and West. Saturday, February eighteenth, potentially the twenty fifth. Sierra Monterey will be paved between Loveless and Huntington Drive. On February eleventh, all American asphalt will be paving the West Drive, as stated. Residents on impacted streets will receive notices. And additional details about exactly what's entailed. The project timeline, same thing will happen on Sierra Monterey. And the street pavement rehabilitation program helps improve the city's infrastructure and for residents' safety. Lastly. We have Arbor Week, March sixth through tenth. Four events that week. The one new event will be a tree tour workshop at Lacy Park on nine. March tenth, that's nine A M. of the morning, just prior to the Chinese Club Tree Planting. We're hoping to get. Good attendance, and that will be our own new arborist Laura. Presenting. The Lacy Park on the trees. That concludes my report. Here, the tree planting is at ten, the workshop is at nine, so if you get there early, we'll have coffee for you. And you can listen to our arborist Laura talk about trees and Lacy Park.
Does anyone have any other questions?
I ask you, is it possible to extend the date for the, I don't think we've had a few responses, but it hasn't. Out much of the day, so I was wondering if there's a reason to extend for another week. I know this is Friday. The gathering responses on the priority initiatives, because I believe the staff is already preparing for the meeting. All, briefing us on all the possibilities. But we just want the information preferences from the community.
Currently, so I can work with the city manager on extending it possibly a few more days. I can let you know that as of today, we've received forty five responses already, which is. The year-ish that I'm in here is the most I've ever gotten on a survey, so it's very exciting. Um, but we can extend it possibly a few more days into next week. The only problem is because of the agenda posting and wanting our directors to be fully up to date with that. Feedback, we.
Oh, it has to be sent for Friday, so it won't have to be Wednesday of next week.
Yes, so you could probably possibly look into it and I'll work with the city manager to try to time that. The directors have been getting up, I updated them this week with the feedback that we have so far. We need to do that, but we don't want to push it too far because we need to agendize it for you and the public. Thank you.
We really do take public comments seriously. Do have an opportunity to review the surveys that are out. They only take a couple of minutes, please review them. Because like you say, average. Please, so go out and enjoy these public events. Anything else, Chief?
That is it.
Thank you. Do I have a motion in a second to wave for the readings? So, rule, second. Hold call, please.
Councilmember Joe? Councilmember Lo? Councilmember Shepherd Ron?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Wong?
Yes.
Mayor Talz.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. First, item number one, presentation of certificates to ceremonial library foundation bookmark contest. I believe Sue. To the podium, would like to welcome you to the podium. And for the presentation of the ceremonial library foundation.
To council members, for giving the foundation the opportunity and for. Posting this event tonight. As you know, the San Marino Public Library Foundation is one of the three support groups in the library. My name is Sivas Winadon, and I'm the current president of the foundation. The Samurino Public Library Foundation was founded in nineteen ninety five. Initially was funded for, to develop an electronic information system to connect the library and the local schools. And then the dedicated staff of the, of the foundation. Put together a campaign to build the current library and the current building as we see it, which is now fifteen years old. The community donated ten point five million dollars, which was supplemented with the city's five million dollar contribution. For this beautiful library that we enjoy. Recent years, the foundation has funded the replacement and upgrade of audio visual equipment in the bathroom. The R F I D system to modernize the handling of the library's collections. And the installation and replacement of the computers in the library. This is our sixteenth. Year presenting the bookmark contest, and we are excited for you to see this year's winner, winning designs. Our contest. Nine through thirteen and fourteen through eighteen, for a total of six winners. Each winner's design is displayed at the limited edition for two months. Each winner receives a hundred, one hundred dollar gift card. Each year, five different guest judges are asked to participate, representing the library, trustees, the librarians, local artists, students, and the foundation. All of this happens due, due to our wonderful supportive bookmark sponsors. Each year, the foundation is fortunate to partner with local businesses who sponsor this contest. This year, we'd like to recognize and thank very much the chamber. Who are here today, Linda Chang. Been a very consistent supporter of our bookmark contest, and appreciate that. And. Also, I would like to recognize Mathnasium, we have Andrew Malina. I guess. Andrew Malina is the district manager and center director of Mathnasium. Mathnasium has been a valued Samurino business since twenty twenty. Specializing in math tutoring, custom learning plans, personalized instruction, and homework help. We thank our, our sponsors and. And I hope that we can continue our relationship with Mathnasium. Onto our winners. I'd like to first present the fourteen through eighteen year. Sir, Mayor Talz. Mayor Talz, can you please present the. I'd like to first recognize our fourteen through eighteen year old winners. Lady Wong. Hi, next, I'm with the nine. Let's go about that. Also. Come all the way from Alice Verde, correct?
Congratulations.
And Lou, also a twenty twenty two winner. There are eight under.
There we go, congratulations. Thank you for your.
Wong.
Congratulations. You might have to be nice to me.
Can I also include, ask for sponsors to come up and also participate, thank you so much.
Yeah, that's fine. And if you go, I guess just hold down. Hope that was, that's great. And.
There are one, two, three.
Thank you for the question. All right, thank you. Yeah, because. All right, so. Okay, we're gonna launch our item number two seconds, two thousand. Homer donation from the Samurino Community Athletic Association. I, Director Johnson, who haven't presented.
That was. Exciting.
Evening, everybody, Mayor Talz, council members. It is my distinct pleasure to introduce and welcome. Stephanie Perry, who is from the Samurino Community Athletic Association. Their mission is to support and foster skills development of youth athletics. And the athletes between the ages of eight and eighteen in our community. We are here to recognize their generous donation of two thousand dollars. That will go to the all city track and field meet that will be held on March tenth. To offset expenses for supplies and equipment. This is their eleventh year that they have sponsored this beloved community event. Stephanie, on behalf of the city and the community services department, we thank you so much. For your, and the entire organization for your sponsorship and your support for this event.
Stephanie, would you like to say anything?
Say thank you very much for the. Is just in working our eighteen year. I sports for a lot of kids. That's our focus, so it's, we're happy to partner with the city to be a part of it. It's all about our youth, and the track day is one of the funnest events that there is, so we're happy to do it.
It is a wonderful event, thank you. So it's, it's a lot of fun, and thank you, Director Johnson. Um, but because this is an acceptance, I have to follow this. Excuse me, does any council member have any question for Director Johnson or?
It's not a question, that is a comment, so I would like to thank them. And since they, wonderful words. Our young athletes, by sign, yeah, S M C, obviously. All of it, so it's a lot of role, the nation.
Anyone else?
Also, thank you, it's incredible you started it and you're still, congratulations. Participated in all sorts of events, so thank you.
But my kids who participate. Passball, track, and it increases against, it's not right here, so it's real, no, I coached a lot, it's, it's a lot of the ones. Thank you. Is there any public comment?
Not receiving any requests for in-person public comment, let me see, give a moment for Zoom participants to see if you raised any. I'm not seeing any, no requests for comment on the side.
Uh, council, you'll see that there's a recommended motion, we have a motion in a second. A second.
Sure, I moved to accept this donation of two thousand dollars from Samurino Community Athletics. And approved the fiscal, or yeah, and approved the fiscal year twenty twenty two, twenty three, expenditure budget commitment of two thousand dollars. Into our restricted donation funds, now two eight one six six four three seven six zero zero, zero two.
For a second. Second.
Councilmember Joe?
Yes.
Councilmember Lo? Councilmember Shepherd Ron, yes. Vice Mayor Wong? Mayor Talz.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you, thank you again, to all of you who are listening. Item number three, received and filed ceremonial police department crime suppression plan. And Chief Contra.
Well, while Chief Contra is making his way up, I did get a comment on Zoom that it is a little difficult to hear people, so everybody could please remember to speak directly into the microphone.
Evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Council. It's my privilege to be able to talk about our crime suppression plan. One of the things. That's important to note. Our number of burglaries, residential burglaries, actually less last year than was in the year before. Despite two, but still it was sixty, that's still not acceptable. We had a high in twenty seventeen and twenty eighteen and twenty nineteen. In twenty eighteen, there were seventy six residential burglaries. Twenty nineteen, there were sixty. And in twenty twenty, twenty twenty one, they dropped considerably. And that was when we implemented the block cameras. Believe in twenty twenty one, we only have twenty four residential burglaries. Started out unfortunately this year, the end of last year with a home invasion robbery, which is significant and horrific. And we had the series of six burglaries on the first of the year. Or the week following the thirtieth. We have seen a slowdown in residential burglaries. We've already implemented this plan, and in many ways, we think part of the implementation has altered some of these. So this decrease, however, vigilant, very, we're happy to deal with this. Started talking about this. End of the summer, beginning of the summer, as we saw a trend of increasing burglaries, I'm gonna make sure we can stifle it somehow. So we took a look at commanders, myself, and some of the officers, detectives, and sergeants. How are we gonna do this? It became a multifaceted approach. And that approach was use community messaging. Again, the security assessment training and implementation that was approved last year's. The engagement through our neighborhood watch. Patrol briefings from detectives and other investigators, burglary suppression details, decoy operations. Utilizing tracking devices and also use of. And also use of. Decoy vehicles parked in certain areas, also using the plainclothes officers. And working with other agencies where. They would loan us a couple of officers for one day and we'd work a certain area. And then we would reciprocate them with the same, their problems. And that was South Pasadena, San Gabriel, and it's been successful, it's something. To me, the first step was getting out community messaging. The. Department has a responsibility to transparent. And to provide information on how our residents can protect themselves, protect their neighbors. And work with us as a team to reduce crime. We've always had the phrase, if you see something, say something. We've been stepping that up, it's been part of our neighborhood watch meetings. Last night, in particular, we discussed it with the block captains. And we went over the block captains messaging. While they would like information, in fact, I solicited from them, how, what's the best way? To get messaging out, what do you like? No real response, a lot of nodding heads, and I said, please come back to me and we're gonna do that. The use of social media, our Instagram page has really taken off. We've identified approximately six officers. Who have a big interest in social media. You have one officer who's got, I think, eight thousand followers on TikTok. And she does a lot of other stuff besides this stuff, but it's all good stuff. And she has an understanding of how to communicate. And created a committee within the department. One of my sergeants is leading that, you know, we're meeting monthly, different ways of communicating through social media. We will identify with our voter officers. And they will be putting out information and pictures and phrases on Instagram about traffic safety. They will, we have our patrol officers who will talk about see something, say something, or other areas. Detectives will give tips and information about. It's much better to see someone who you can relate to than an old guy like me. So they're doing very well, they're extremely interested, and I appreciate their efforts. The other parts, making sure we have neighborhood watch, we had a very successful meeting. Three weeks ago, about the crime increase, and I believe we had. Eighty-something people on. Zoom and seventy-something people, sixty-something people. And it was great questions. And the process of answering all those questions, we've been putting it on the website, all of it. Or has other questions. We will continue these community meetings, whether it's town hall, whether it is coffee with a cop, Instagram, and other social media. The. One thing that we're starting, that was very, was discussed last night with block captains. We have one off, one sergeant right now, another officer is about to start training accepted. High prevention through environmental design. Purpose to use that, as I mentioned, last year's budget, was to have a trained person. Certain level of credibility about what they're talking about, instead of anecdotal or. Experience through being a police officer, want them to be certified, trained, and they are certified through these standards of training. We've already started to do that, we offer a service, we come out to someone's home, I guarantee you won't be a victim, but we can really come up and tell you. It's drugs, boom, lights. The initial part is patrol briefings, detectives are meeting with patrol officers on a regular basis. They are given heat maps, which are. Apps of the city where crime is occurring. Or dense the map, the brighter red, because we use that, is where there is more crime. And. Understand that most of the crime right now is in the northeast corner of the city. San Gabriel, California, where we also see. Increasing in crime with discussions and meetings with detectives from Temple City and Pasadena. Meeting with other agencies on a regular basis, monthly and sometimes bi-weekly. About crime. And most of us, what we're seeing is kind of, we're getting a still from areas east of us. And that's been helpful, but we give that information, it includes the dates and times when the crimes are occurring, so the officers know. When they have discretionary time during their shift, and discretionary time is. That time other than handling the vacation checks, handling calls for service. Or doing our mandated footbeats in business area, and also going to the schools at least twice a day. Walking around, saying hello to the staff, students. So when they have the free time. And they're gonna be doing that, and they'll be doing traffic. And that's working out, and they have people directed and giving them a mission. The. Other part of the. Steps of the crime suppression plan is using decoy operations where you put a car out, where we may put a. Piece of hardening equipment or other high-valued property in a car, it's unlocked, it's tracking. We have noticed that Arcadia has been doing that very successfully a long period of time. Working with the VA ahead of time, so that we make sure that value of the property is there, that meets the felony requirement. Also that what we're doing can't be called entrapment, and that will result in a crime. So there's multiple steps with all of these plans. The. We're going to have two community police academies this year. First one is March, April, and the next one will be sometime in the fall. And during that time, we're gonna talk about all the aspects of the department. And how we work with other departments and other agencies. We're also gonna really push, see something, say something. And how our community members participating in Neighborhood Watch, also understanding that if you see something, it is a call. Is going to help. If we can get more people trained that way, and with our outreach through Instagram and other social media, through. Town hall meetings, coffee with a cop, all these other opportunities for us to talk, and going to PTA meetings. That we've also considered establishing a patrol, citizens patrol. Lot involved with that background process that we have to have everyone go through. And there's the expense of having someone. Monitor and manage the program, that. What I would like to do, and what I'm going to do, is use these other methods to talk about involvement. Through our social media, through our Neighborhood Watch movement, and through the police academy. Think we'll hit a lot more people, we'll be able to touch a lot more people than just you when we try it. There's, didn't really work very well. If people had very particular. Needs or wants with the program, it wasn't really conducive to what we were trying to accomplish, so we're gonna try this. It's less money, it's more contact with more people. And helping people, and that will work. Make sure that we're working, the, the net's working, so we're gonna make sure we check our metrics. Look at our statistics, not just see a decrease in crime, but an increase in involvement with the community. A better understanding of what we're doing. A, also be looking at our calls for service coming from the community, see, are they calling us more? And when we see all of those elements, and we'll be looking at some other things, decrease in specific crimes. And then how we're working with agencies. Use those, report on those. Early to the neighbor, to the Public Safety Commission, in our monthly reports. And see what's going on. If it's not working, we're gonna try something different. This is not etched in stone, it is. And very much. The indictment at all. There is a possible fiscal impact, we believe we're gonna use about 200 hours of overtime. For the officers to work the operations, type suppression details. We have the funds available in our current account. But you may have to come back at some point and ask for it. But being responsible, we're being careful, and hopefully that will, following their, what we're doing is going to. That's my report, if anyone has any questions.
Councilmember, do you have any questions?
I also attended. Captain. Last night, and well, attended, it was at 15, 16, and then 17, so. Over, eight, thirty, and then I remember you mentioned this program of the best. If each block. Is up five, six, three, and so that one takes about sixty-ish, you know, captains out of town. So I'm just wondering, do you have a. Sign that. The nets. Blocks, so when somebody signed up, they know there's always someone in their blocks. Do we have a map like that?
Yes, we do, the Neighborhood Watch group, which is led by a sergeant, Jeremy Bestbitch, and we have five officers. We've split the city into four areas. Fifth officer involved is dealing directly with businesses. He has already established a good relationship, should speak. With the business owners, and we do conduct meetings there. We have marked where the block captains are, and currently we have approximately 22 block captains. What choice, 22, 23, 24, we're trying to build momentum, since most people aren't too concerned with COVID. And they wanna get together again, that will be able to build more and more. Question was asked last night, what do you think would be the best, I said, if I could get fifty, you know, fifty, Neighborhood Watch groups. Some point in my tenure here, I'd be very, very happy. But we're definitely working hard towards that. There is a little bit of work, so sometimes people. Don't know if they wanna get engaged with that, there's also a reluctance because people wanna maintain their privacy. But we'll be explaining all that with every meeting, and anyone who is interested. Still, when we talk to people who become victims of crime to their neighbors, hey, would you like to become part of Neighborhood Watch, this is all you have. And the other thing that I think would be helpful is as we have the block captains take more control. And interact with their neighbors. And for us to push out crime information through the block captains. And hopefully that will cause some enthusiasm or interest in creating their own.
Thank you.
And then, I, I think it's also a great way to diversify. On the front, all. And the other things for, for the city, as you mentioned, the actual, I, is, you know, what is, with some, you see, actual program. What they do is they, of course, they have, they call them, of course, the best. Under. That's something that's retired. Security. And. And what they do. Those possibly, those actually sponsor. Very much, or just, oh, I think if. Without that, and we can get a lot of sponsorship, Tom, if that's.
There will absolutely be lots of different possibilities, I'm not dismissing it completely. But I think right now, we're gonna focus this plan and always keep the volunteer. And available and ready to report. That's as it's.
Councilmember Cho.
No, I think this is a well-thought-out plan, as you said, I think, and I have to, as we go, appreciate the work you put into this.
Councilmember Cho.
Questions, thank you, Mayor. I know that one of the. Section to talk about the patrol briefings and keep out, that if there's some interest in the community. So that the average person knows, like I've seen heat maps for traffic accidents. Make, it reminds me that heat maps for crime or burglaries also are kind of useful, they don't specify necessarily a street or a location. That's been pointed, but just where it's occurring, because I, until, for example, tonight, I didn't really think about the northeast portion as being particularly strong. Recently, sort of last month and a half or so. So I'm wondering if the heat map is already gonna be generated for the patrol handouts, I don't know which probably, the meeting. Roll call, okay, that's easy. The roll call, beating, exactly, great show, so if that might be also something that we could have somewhere on our website, so that also community members would know if it's updated. Weekly or monthly or bi-weekly, sort of to keep them informed as well, because some people turn to our website to find information. And that would be a good tool to get people their eyes out, and perhaps be more motivated, for Neighborhood Watch, or whatever we decide, you know, or the things that, that would be helpful to your officers as well. So I think it's a good benefit, I think it's already been done.
It will be a good supplement to what we have already on the website, where we have a crime map. It was not working for quite a while because of changeover in our cat, our curated dispatch. Purchased a couple of years ago, and the, a lot of issues with software, things like that, well, it's up, it's running. It is available, it takes two to three days for the map to be updated. Because we have to take a report, it has to be approved, it has to be reviewed by the records manager. And then it is, so the information is there, so it takes, you know, a couple of days, it may only take a day sometimes, but it's allowed two or three days, so that information is there. Our residents can follow along with the information, and they can select specific crimes, and they can also do a geo-fence, I believe, around a certain area. And if you go out too far, you start pulling in from every other city around. So that is available right now in the heat map supplement.
Thing that I noticed when you brought up Neighborhood Watch, and I know we're trying to get that going and spread around our cities, when I pass through surrounding cities, they have actually those small, I'm gonna say. Triangular signs that say Neighborhood Watch program in this neighborhood, or I don't know, it's a very, sort of thing, conspicuous, but I think you do notice them as you're driving, for example, through South Pass. At some of the residential areas there, and I'm wondering, I, we have them, but I sure haven't seen them for a while. Is that something we can also form or some of these towns that we have, those up, because I do think it helps if you. Sort of notice them as you're driving through the neighborhood, that this is sort of an organized approach. And maybe refresh the areas, because I have seen them somewhat, but I'm not sure that they're down or up.
We do have those, we have sixty-one at all the entry points to the city. We also, and they include Neighborhood Watch and 24-hour surveillance. And we also have specific. Neighborhood Watch signs available to any group that solicits, or would ask for them. Last night, we talked about that with the block captains, say, we have them, just come see us, we'll make sure you get them.
I didn't know they were available, it's why we see that. And my last question that concerns the, I guess, the. Is it called the Community Police Academy? I'm just wondering what you see as the benefits for that, really, because I imagine, much like the. Actually having a volunteer program where there's work, you know, being done, it does take a, kind of, amount of time, officer work, etc. I don't even know if it generates overtime to put on the programs and then, you know, follow over, it's a couple of weeks, I think. And so I was just wondering, do them, those people, are you envisioning that they would be future volunteers for us, or is it just an information dissemination? Just, I don't mean to put the phrase there, is it more about information? Not just, I don't mean to put the phrase there. Is it more about information? For those people who sign up or is, are there some benefits that they would get with their training that we did capitalize on, for example?
Some cities do use that as a feeder pool or a requirement or a volunteer program. The main purpose is to inform the community about what we do. And what we could do together in a partnership. We're a mystery to a lot of people. Everyone's, most people, their. Idea of what a police department is, is watching. I don't watch police shows. You know, the police shows and where they, you know, they turn around D A M and it's in about fifteen minutes. And. So this program gives information. We also talk about serious topics about police misconduct, about officer involved shootings, use of force. And we give participants the ability to use a simulator. With that said, passing a P D and put them in a situation where it'd be a shoot, don't shoot, or no use of force, or. Would have to. Me, it's very important because we're also asking the community to contribute to the public safety test. And if we're not completely transparent. Where they understand what we do, have the ability to ask questions. And they can build on the knowledge they received there. That you can make sure we're messaging that and we're opening new lines of communication. There may be someone who. Only sees a place in some sort of bad light. Or maybe someone who just doesn't understand what we do. Educate them and educate us about what they don't know and what they like. But as I said in the very beginning, can be used as a heater for. Volunteers. And what we'll do. Kind of mix it up. I'm going to make sure that we ask people questions if they'd be interested in volunteering. And they'd be very specific about what kind of volunteers we need. And the needs that we have will be helpful.
Thank you, councilmember Vice Mayor.
Yes, have you ever considered using a decoy item for burglaries, like or even use that as a publicity stunt for that?
We are talking about it quite a bit. Adia uses. Presidents are gone, they're on vacation, they. Willingly allow the use of their home. And items are left in the home with the tracking. Wouldn't know it. Tracking devices are very strong. And they've had some success. And we're looking at it. They have more people than we do. There's. And they put out twenty or thirty decoys in homes, businesses, certain areas. So they have better luck. It's like going to a better fishing spot. So that's something we've been talking about and we're going to have to approach the city attorney. Liability questions about some other questions before we. I don't want to.
Thank you. I just have one question. It seems to me that see something, say something is valuable. Have, but you've got other employees out in the city almost every day. Have we worked with them, trained them in any way to. Or encouraged them to be involved in. In a program like that.
We spoke during our executive team meetings to all the department heads about it. And that's on our to-do list to go meet with. All the departments that they have their briefings and call calls. And ask them to do things we've done in the past with public works, a large number of employees hired since the last time we did it. And I think that would, great idea. There's something we're talking about. I will now open it up for public comment. Is there anybody here in the room to. Comment on the pressure? Steve Dunn, is there anybody online?
We do have one comment decent in chat and asked me to read it for them is from Kevin and it's. Will the upcoming CPA be about the same as the CPA from a few years ago? You have participated either in the first or second one from back then.
The Community Police Academy that we had years ago, we're going to build from that. We're going to have different speakers. We're going to cover similar topics, but we want to make sure it's a little bit better than this. That was the first one. It'll only get better. Any other questions?
I have no other requests or comment on this.
I will close public comment then and bring it back. This is a receive and file matter. Does any councilmember have any other discussion?
As well as to your team. Dispatch, Jonas with dispatch, which is a huge success. And that was really fascinating to have the dispatchers there also. The community gets asked some of the staff as well, the questions. I hope those programs.
Shame on me for not doing that. It was immensely popular and interacting with all of the children and parents. It was great. Playdates. Anyone else? Not seen anyone? Thank you, but don't. Because consideration of resolution number R dash twenty-three dash oh three, amending the city B schedule dot fees. Issuance of carry to conceal weapon permit. Evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor. With the change in the concealed carry. Based upon the New York State rule versus New York State. We used to, used to have a need, you had to have proof why you needed to carry a concealed weapon. Now. It's based upon. Basically, what kind of person you are. You're a good person. There are requirements that you have to check for. Your crime, you have any criminal history. You will have a background done. You will have fingerprints taken. You'll have to go to training. Conversation with me. And also a psychological test. The psychological test is an interview with a psychologist that we use for our background as patients. That's a legal mandate. One issue with that is we only get a certain amount of money for that and. It's not enough. We get a hundred and fifty dollars that we can charge and we don't. And it costs four hundred. Initially, there was option for someone to go through the Los Angeles County Sheriff's Department. Sheriff's have on that option. If in the past, if I denied a permit, the resident could go to the sheriff's and sheriff's would then go through the process of deciding whether or not the person. Everyone who has done that before. Last March. Sheriff's are going to continue that process. But since then, sheriff does not, will not. Process any. Person's request for a permit. Does not live in an incorporated area or an area that sheriff serves. So Penal Code Section twenty-six, one fifty-five authorizes local police chief to license people to carry a concealed weapon. Used to be, as I said, good cause. And that was changed. It was determined to be unconstitutional. And now we have developed a criteria for issuing a sealed carry license. Some of the things that we'll be looking at is mental incapacitation. Criminal convictions involving acts of violence, history of abuse of controlled substances. We're allowed to charge certain fees. Application fee will be twenty-five dollars. You get an I D card that has your name and your information that you can show if you're stopped by a police officer. There's a fee for live scan, which is how we do our criminal checks, which is a hundred and thirteen dollars. And then another fifty-two dollars because the DOJ, Department of Justice charges. As I said, the psychological exam, you're allowed to collect a hundred and fifty dollars. And it is four hundred and fifty dollars. The renewal application is zero. And if there was a need somehow for psychological exam and. Charge a hundred and fifty dollars, we have to, for the remaining three hundred dollars. There's also any amendments to the card printing, et cetera. It's ten dollars. It's a processing fee of our detectives' time to do background, which works out to about two hundred and twenty-eight dollars. And then initial application is five hundred and sixteen dollars and the renewal is three hundred and twenty-five dollars. We charge twenty dollars, twenty percent of the fee upfront. And once it's approved, then we charge the remaining eighty percent. And again, that's Appeal Code Section twenty-six, one ninety. The local fees may increase annually based upon the consumer price index. And there may be other pass-through fees based upon legislation and or Department of Justice funding. The fiscal impact or the ease that for the city, the fees that we cannot. And other than that, we'll be able to give everything up to a hundred dollars. The. City recommends, or rather staff recommends that the city council adopt resolution number R two-three. Dash oh three, amending the city's fee schedule to include fees for issuance of C C W licenses. If the city council concurs with our recommendation, an appropriate motion would be I move to adopt. Resolution number R dash twenty-three dash zero three, resolution of San Marino City Council. Amending the city's fee schedule to include fees for the issuance of C C W license. Chair, do you have any questions? Also, membership role.
For that explanation, I will give you a question. Gun violent crimes analysis and as most recent mass shootings, there's been a lot of discussion about some of the triggers for. The perpetrators of those crimes. I think it comes up nationally that domestic violence. Past incidents, perhaps in restraining order, and some are the most common cause for a gun violence. So I'm wondering, do you have, I don't know how it works. And when somebody comes in for such a permit, are you able to access those records if there's been either restraining order, domestic violence calls? The prisoner, is it limited to just within San Marino or is there search that's on a broader say? In L A County or how does that work in your investigation of that?
Live scan will. Find those crimes if someone's been arrested or convicted of it. If they have a restraining order, had a temporary restraining order. We also have the ability to look at any, I'm the person was involuntarily held for a mental health issue. We look at local, state, federal. So we will get reports if other agencies request. If filed and include that information in the C I C National Crime. Center. Very much those are the keys. Those are the things that are very important. So. Also, when the application is filled out, you're asked specifically, have you been involved in those things? And if you check the box, no, we're going to deny it not only for that, those crimes, but also be. Be liable. Application.
And is that true also for, now I can still carry, but there are regular gun permits. Correct? There are two levels of gun permits. What are you talking about? Permits, don't own a gun, don't intend to, but I just am unsure. Is this a different category that you can then? Than having a gun permit at your home, buying a gun if you can?
It, it, basic. Steps you have to go through to have a gun in your home. There's a background check done, local, state and federal. And it allows you to have a gun at home. Or to transport it with the ammunition and the firearm separate. It can't be loaded, but you can have it at home. If it's your shooting range, it could go hunting. You have to go through a class. Before you're able to purchase it, you're also supposed to have either a safe or a locking device that meets the rules. There's this permit. Then there's also a permit for police officers, serve officers that are allowed to carry a concealed weapon. And then there are civilians that have a concealed carry permit associated with their type of work. And that's very much like what we're talking.
Right, thank you. The other question is, just in terms of following the statistics on this, will there be some reporting to our committee, not who obviously, but just the number? And is this something that we can track? I have no idea. Give us an estimate or what you anticipate. Is there interest in this? Area that you've already been approached and how many you already have in our community and all that you've tracked in our public.
You will provide the number of applications, the number of permits issued. Department of Justice will also have that information. And there will be information at that level. The. Sorry.
Was kind of just.
We will make sure that we have the numbers of applications and. And sure that that's available, report on that. To the Public Safety Commission on really cases.
Do we have any now?
We have. Two permits on the old method of doing this. We had up to four and two dropped off. Then we have up here nine people who have submitted applications. And they've been waiting very patiently for us. Then we also have. We'll call probably about six or seven more. And conversations, probably another ten or more. I believe we're probably half in the number. Forty, fifty, some point next year.
Councilmember, who?
I do have pretty extensive knowledge of firearms. I actually was. Oh, I had some military, I think in army prior to. And after that, I've been a legal gun owner for almost thirty years. Expensive. But because of that, because of that, now, now there's no good causes required. I do think there may be a lot more. Easy, but because of this, I'm very concerned to worry as a, as a, as a gun owner, as a, as a. You know, one thing that I always. Just act the whole. There's, when there's someone that's. Thinking. You know. What, you know. We'll treat it carelessly or, or. Just on the show to the girl, to the girlfriend, for example, since. You've got, that's the most intense moment when you're seeing the waving a gun. So, so now, now there's no limit. And apply. So I just like to find out how much control. Local city can have by we are, you know, I, I mean, for, you know. And hope other cities do the same. And so the question. And so the question I had, the first one on the, this one, of course, when we still do background check, just like by a gun. And when it doesn't match, it says when it doesn't, there's a discrepancy between the background check and what they said, and we would do a, a, a polygraph. So who does that in our, in our department, we have a what we have, what they have sent to.
We will not be doing a polygraph. The law doesn't allow us to do that. There's, there could be a big discussion about polygraphs, but based upon what the law allows us to do, we're not going to do that. With the background, also if someone gets a permit, violates the law, then we revoke the permit. It's not, well, what you get, it's matured forever. If you fail to follow rules, you violate the law, it can be taken from you. Also, there's some legislation that's being sponsored by Senator Portino at the State Legislature. I'm trying to control, who can have them, what age, place, area. Had some really good discussions with city attorney about that, and there's been some court decisions already. I'm not about to be a lawyer, perhaps Montez could add to that, but it's, we'll see what we can do.
It didn't mention, it didn't mention, or there's some restrictions, it didn't mention the places in areas, I wonder if they had a license. Church to, to, to library, to any place that they want to, once they have that license.
Members of the council, there are separate penal codes that make or define to open carry in certain areas, also to make a crime to have concealed weapon. Most of the concealed weapon section, however, do include sections where you have a CCW license issued for some of the sections that the chief's talking about. So in reviewing all of those, it's actually surprising the number of places someone with a weapon can carry a weapon. I know L.A. recently announced that they're going to impose some restrictions on sealed weapons in buildings. Sure, that's a result in litigation, but yeah, for the supervisors. But we'll have to track how that goes. But CCW itself, the license of conditions on the license generally just require you to comply with the law. Then it becomes dependent upon the holder of the license, but where they're allowed to carry and not carry.
And then under the, or under the, and so saw that, so for each firearm to be carry, concealed carries, it's registered, so if he intends to carry, I, 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 each one of them have to be registered. And then, so when we mentioned training, so what does the training?
Want to correct you on one item, you're only allowed two firearms that you can carry concealed.
At the same time, what, what?
Well, I still have to carry two, so I can understand that, but yeah. But I, we have two that are registered for you to carry. And I, I don't want to confuse register for CCW with requirement to register your firearms with the state, California, and the federal number. But when we're using these terms, sometimes it can be used.
Only allowed to register up.
Yes.
For concealed carry. And so the trend, so the training is done by our police department or?
No, there is, we did a lot of research, and we had outstanding help with Mr. Montez. I really have to thank him for everything he did for us. We are looking at a list of recommended training locations that the Los Angeles County Sheriff's Department is using. So when someone comes in, we will say, please go to one of these schools. We'll get the information that they completed the training, that's included in the whole pack. So it would be way too much for us to, to vet all these different companies. And we believe that the Sheriff's Department has a good list.
It, it's okay for the training.
Yes.
One, I think so, for the training of recite and safety, handling, and owning a gun is already a great response of carry the gun in public. That's a very big, big, big responsibility. And then since I mentioned the new gun owners, because when you're purchasing a gun, they actually ask you to demonstrate the, what, and the gun safety. And simply they registering, registering two guns, and all the guns, you know, guns are very complicated. All the modern firearms, all the safety features, some have trigger safety, manual safety, some has no hammer, hammerless, so you can't even, some has a cock, a cocking lever, some doesn't. And usually the accident involves the most with that very last chamber, at last bullet left in the chamber. Some guns cannot be fired when, certain guns fire any intent. So all this is very complicated enough, or even, you know, experienced gun owner, I have to check every time to make sure it's safe. For a new gun owner, that's something, now this is very concerning, when they're using that, I mean, by accident, it's a struggle, or because mishandled. So when they're registering these two guns, are we able to at least, at least make sure they know how to operate these guns?
Yes, we'll come through on manipulation drill, and we'll be using our armors to do that. As you said, whether you reserve a revolver, a semi-automatic pistol, they'll operate differently, and then even semi-automatic pistols, depending upon which model you have and which make you operate differently. And they'll have to demonstrate that at the training, they'll have to demonstrate their ability to manipulate their firearm. They'll have to be able to show how to load, unload safely, understand that rules of firing a firearm, they will have to qualify with that, and then with us, we'll have to qualify also. And then they'll, the training on it, we'll be talking about oral responsibility of a firearm and what could happen if you do fire a firearm. This is very serious to me, I mean, I've carried a gun for almost forty-four years, and I personally can't wait till I don't have to worry about carrying it. It's a lot of responsibility every time you, you carry a firearm. So it's, the people will clearly understand that in the training, they'll understand it during the background phase. Because we also will interview family, friends, neighbors, and to make sure there's no problems. The unfortunate thing is, we have to do this, don't have a choice. And we look forward to, if there's good legislation, to make sure people are safer and also allowed to exercise their second amendment rights.
If someone's dealt also.
That's a question I don't have an answer for, I'll find that out. I don't remember seeing anything written anywhere that states you have to wait a certain amount of time if you, you know, you're trained.
Under some a bit more character. And I found one item that's very, like, writing a bad check, writing bad checks is also one restriction, if you wrote a bad check, you cannot write with this, but is this the limitation period is seven years?
I believe so, and you're violating the law, and you write a bad check is through the criminal history, we'll find out.
I just, you know, because I know this is, yes or no question, this is, this is basically now, now this state's opening up the, to enable this rights to the law-abiding citizens, the good guys, the bad guys are not going to go through this. Carries anyways, but I just want to make sure this good guys, especially the new gun owners, you know. I checked the, the numbers that she pointed to me in the past few years, especially after, and then the new gun, which is, well, there's eighteen million guns sold in the United States. Eight, two thousand twenty, eight point five were first sold. And even until last year, still five, six million, accounted for thirty to forty percent. So there's a lot of new gun owners, and you date like this, that's, I just want to make sure.
Yes. Vice Mayor, do you have any questions? Yes, according to the permit. Leave, you can go anywhere in the country. Maybe wrong, and I'll check that.
Any data on why is a crime committed by the weapon is?
This is too new, it just became law. March, so we have no statistics.
Thank you.
I just, I, too quick on one, just for public consumption, and that is the need to take the psychological examination is only based upon after you interview the person you would then. It's not automatic in every instance. It's if you see something wrong, you would require the examination. They are taking attack, that's part of the application process. Okay, that's not how this is, it is, or the follow-up, the renewal, it's case by case. Okay, maybe I, I read that wrong, but I'm looking at it, and page two, it says the chief of police may based on a criteria established by the chief of police criteria. Okay. So the other thing is, it, it, it does state if you're, that the chief of police may place special restrictions depending time, place, manner, service. Your response to that is, you're going to follow whatever the, it's, look at the law, and if you can't carry it, schools, you can't, you're not going to place an additional. But you may, I don't know. It, I think part of it will depend upon the new legislation, whether it passes or not. And it's also based on current state law. I have no further questions, is there any public comment? Here. Anything online?
Let me get some folks a moment to raise their hand. Not seeing any raised hands from Zoom, however, we did receive an email regarding this item from Mr. John Dustin. I was able to previously contribute to both the city council and to the public, so I will just provide a summary of it. In short, Mr. Dustin is in support of keeping the requirement for the psychological examination as part of the application process, and raised some questions about L.A. and L.A. Sheriff's Department and that interaction between San Marino Sheriff's Department.
And further from the upper?
I have no other questions.
Okay, I will bring it back to the council for the discussion. Member Cho.
But there will be.
House membership rule.
Thank you, Chief, for your powerful presentation, and I support type one to the evaluation.
And Council Vice Mayor, and I have nothing further, although I can support this. I, I will ask the council for a motion.
I move to adopt Resolution Number R dash twenty three dash zero three, a resolution of the San Marino City Council amending the city's fee schedule to include fees for the issuance of a CCW license.
Second.
Thank you.
Move to second rule.
Councilmember Cho?
Yes.
Councilmember Lo?
Yes.
Councilmember Shepard Ronnie? Vice Mayor Wong?
Yes.
Mayor Talt? Motion passes.
Number five, receiving financial report for second quarter. Director Chan.
I do, there, I do have a speech that the All right. Tonight, I'll be presenting the financial status report for the second quarter. This is a recitive file from the and the order that we're covering is the months for October, November, and December. Let me jump in here for our quarter over quarter comparison. We are looking at ten point seven million dollars that we collected in revenues versus last quarter was ten point seven million dollars. It's all about a six point four percent. My expenditure side, we saw five point nine million dollars spent last quarter. At this time, last quarter was five point seven, so an increase of On the comparison of year-to-date, this is my opinion of their comparison, because you're taking six months worth of data. On the revenue side, we collected twelve point five million dollars compared to the last year was eleven point eight. We're looking at a five point six percent increase. On expenditures, we spent fourteen million dollars, and last year we spent twelve point nine million dollars. An increase of eight point six percent. Now going to the reasons of why. First, to highlight on the revenue side, property taxes are, have come in approximately five percent higher than last year, and that was anticipated. In the past, Mayor Talt had mentioned if we received the property tax from the county, and I have confirmed that, yes, we have, back in December twenty two thousand twenty-two, we received eight point three million dollars. And then on January twentieth of twenty twenty-three, we received three point two million dollars from the county. We did receive all the property tax, those due to us from the county. We are seeing some decrease in building permits. That's just not only locally here in San Marino, it's just kind of nationwide in terms of housing, the slowdown of housing sales. On the plan check side, volume-wise, it continues to, I mean, and I know the community development department has been busy trying to and checks as the, recreation's revenue overall has been stabilizing, getting to pre-pandemic levels from COVID. That's a great sign, and also our investment income has rebounded quite a bit from last year as yields have just naturally gone up due to the moves that feds have made over the last year. And so the city treasurer and I have been investing crudely first start funds, so we can get an honor invested. On the expenditure side, overall, as I mentioned, we've seen a year-over-year increase, and the reason for that really is the MOUs that were approved. Council, and that was, of course, salary increases in our first, actually, first that. And also just tree trimming, timing of tree trimming, we did have some more tree trimming, that was had some bad backlog of during these six months. We do the trimming in spring and summer, but we did that during these six months, so we did see an increase in interest. Our, a fund balance, our general fund balance, we ended December at fourteen point one million versus our year was at fourteen. So relatively flat. On our CIP fund balance, we ended the month at seventeen point five million versus seventeen point three million. I do forecast that our CIP balance will slowly increase as we continue building out our San Marino. Next two slides usually is presented by our city treasurer, but she gave, she wanted me to be in the line, right? So she's actually the moral supporter in the back, she will be available for any questions at the council. This chart here is just our overall total cash and investments. We ended our December month at forty one point three million dollars, that red bar there. And then the blue bar is what we had in total cash investments last year. As you can see, there's that big increase there, and there's various components for that, but it's really our investments, our overall revenue. Our investments, our raw revenues, also our expenditures on our CFT, we have quite a bit of a large fund balance remaining in our CFP. So we're hoping a spend on our infrastructure projects that are. And the last slide I have for you tonight is just our yields, um, that we wanted to show the council. Our yield that we, we, the city's yield ended the month at point four, uh, one percent. And so you can see that it's gradually increasing, it's that blue line up on the charts, um, trailing behind the one-year and five-year treasury. The only highlight for this night is really regards to that green line, if you can see that green line, that's that one-year treasury. Versus a purple line, that's actually lower than the five-year. And what that really indicates is a sign of a recession, uh, economists call it an inverted yield curve. Probably heard that terminology. Just shows that there's a possible, or maybe we are in a recession, and so how does that impact San Bruno, I think? Us, um, we don't heavily rely on sales tax, so we won't see an impact there, but of course, naturally, housing, property taxes, they have an impact. So that's something I am monitoring closely. But other than that, um, we'll be available for questions from the council.
Thank you, Director Chen. Council membership, we have any question?
No.
Uh, council member Lo?
No.
No, just a comment, I think, because we're going to receive a file this, uh, I think the twenty twenty-three, twenty-two, twenty, twenty-two, twenty-one, right?
Yes, it's mostly fiscal year, and that's why it's referred, referred as twenty-three. Because we're in fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three, so I tend to use twenty-three the later year, but that's why this is.
Oh, so if we're Q two of October, November, December, you're saying you're categorizing as twenty, as a fiscal year.
Okay, so that, just, just wanted to clarify that here.
Vice Mayor? All right. Uh, of you in your world's.
And I thank you very much.
Other in public.
May proceed then for in person, uh, give Zoom a moment, raise their hands. Not seeing any markers for comment.
We will post a couple of comments, bring it back, if there's any council member having further comments. Seen none, thank you very much, it's a receiving file, so I don't think you're actually taking it. But, uh, thank you to both of you for this particular sponsorship over our. Uh, next up is item number six, which is receiving file fiscal year. Twenty twenty-two to twenty-three mid-year financial review, updated five-year financial forecast and long-term financial projections. And of budget. Correct.
Vice Mayor, city council members. Another presentation for you tonight, this is more of a comprehensive report. About the year, this report is probably the most developed report in our history. Besides the budget. But I will walk you through the, uh, article when it comes.
Sorry, this is part of the technical difficulty.
A little stressed. Um, so yes, tonight, um, I'll be presenting the financial status. Versus the. Mention. Um, so I'll start out with fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three mid-year review. And, um, provide a year-end projection, how I believe that will end the year. And then also various budget adjustments or budget amendments. Then I'll take a pause or take questions from the council, um, for any of the items that I discussed and then, or present. And then I will jump into the five-year forecast, long-term financial projections, and the general fund to. Which is by transfer. Let me jump into the mid-year review. In a parallel, what I just mentioned in item five, but. Uh, regardless of our media revenues this year, we're looking at revenue-wise, thirty-four point two million dollars in budget. And year-to-date, six months, we collect this to twelve points, million dollars. Uh, it's about thirty-seven percent of what we budgeted. And the first six months tends to trail the budget as the bigger property tax and beauty taxes come, um, to the city the next six months. Whereas to prior year, we received eleven point eight million dollars, so we're seeing approximately six percent increase year-over-year. On the expenditure side, the budget is thirty-one point seven million dollars. Six months in, we spent fifteen, three point three million dollars, that's about forty-eight percent of the budget, so we're in line with the budget. Regards to comparing ourselves to prior year, that was fourteen point one million dollars that we spent, so we are seeing about a nine percent increase year-over-year. As I mentioned on earlier item, it's really driven by the MOUs. During this. Rough fund balance, um, as I mentioned in my earlier presentation, our general fund balance is at fourteen point one million dollars. At the December, and our CFP fund balance is at seventeen point five million dollars. Regards to our, um, year-end projection. On the revenue side, as I mentioned, the budget is thirty-four point two million dollars. I am projecting to end the year close to thirty-two point four million. And it's shy about a seven hundred thousand dollars or two point two percent lower. There will be, the main driver for that is our ARPA monies, our American recovery in this. Rescue Act monies from the federal government, this was the COVID money that we received, three point one million dollars. We've actually received that money from the federal government, but as we spend it, I account. So, um, we budgeted thirty-four point two million dollars, and part of that includes ARPA. But, um, I'm projecting out that we're not going to spend all this money, so whatever we get recognized for revenue is close to the thirty-three point four million dollars. On the expenditure side, we budgeted thirty-two point eight million. I could project to end the year at about thirty-one point one million or about five percent less than the budget, and that's really driven by our salary saving. Overall, I do anticipate our surplus to end the year plus two point three, fifty plus six million dollars. Um, budget amendments, um, there are eight budget amendments. For you council to consider, and really this is operational in nature, meaning that we adopt the budget in May. Most of the budget is really drafted during this February and April months. We don't have final numbers, and so we do have to come to council at times to amend the budget. I wouldn't go through each of the items, eight items, but just highlight a few here. On the general fund side, the only general fund adjustment is the sixty thousand for COVID nineteen legal expenses. The, uh, this was a stack oversight, we should have budgeted this item, but we did not, so. Uh, we are asking council to amend the budget for sixty thousand, year-to-date, we've spent forty-eight thousand dollars in COVID nineteen expense. So we just want to account for the rest remaining, remainder. Going to skip down to the OTS, that's the Office of Traffic Safety, thousand dollars. That item really is just, uh, we actually got the traffic record system software last fiscal year. But due to timing, we weren't able to get reimbursed from OTS, so that sixty thousand dollars comprises up the reimbursement from OTS for that software. And some, oh, uh, small portion, I believe, a little over three thousand is for the UI over time. Um, just moving kind of further down on measure W, the seven hundred and eight thousand dollars. This is, this was a valid measure passed by the voters back in two thousand eighteen. They clean water fund, only, um, vice to, to San Marino, you know, we've received. So far, it's four hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars. We are due remaining two hundred and forty to get us to this seven oh eight thousand dollars. And this is really for stormwater recycling, um, and I'll be working with the public works director to budget this funding for next year's. So you'll be seeing that in the C. Last item is that cops grant at the bottom for sixty-seven thousand dollars, that's another timing where. I mean, in a sense that it was for the command post trailer, but because of the time of procuring this, um, this item. You were going to use homeless security grant money, but because of the timeframe that homeless security gave us, you weren't able to procure this item. We are actually, um, be budgeting this as a cop's brand. That said, I'll take a pause here and just open it up for the council. Have any questions regarding the, the items that I presented?
Also. Questions? First. I don't know what to really know. Also, we're low.
No.
Vice Mayor.
Just a. Good picture question, um, in terms of the budget surplus, I know that you are estimating two point three ninety to two point six. That about what we did. Uh, we say, I'm sure I see it from point. But I would just ask you now. If there's a trend among the budget surplus, where do we find ourselves versus last year's? On surface. Pushing, I make a difference.
Um, tonight, the next item that I'll be concluding with in regards to the transfer of our last fiscal year, the surplus from there. That's group with five million dollars. Or equally, we range between two point five to three point five, there, there was a year. Years ago, that was slightly higher than that, but for the most part, it's ranged from two point. Regards to why are we going to end the year at two point three? It's really just my best projection, as I mentioned, it's really driven by the ARPA. Uh, it is a one-time, um, money that we receive from the government, so that is not continuing. But it really, um, really depends on how we spend this. And how for it until we spend them. So I think that's what you see that increase regards to surplus, and of course, my numbers are very conservative, we're looking out, um. To how we're going to end the year, we're still, we still have six more months to go.
I guess it's just a, oh, and so many of the partisan public works. Projects that say our CFP, um. I'm not differentiating the department side of any one category, but we're still haven't made any progress on a lot of those things. On, I've got page eighty-nine of the packet here, um, so I'm just wondering how will that, are you taking that into account as well? And you look, um, at what will be either a surplus or a left number, or that money not spent doesn't really. Consider the surplus, I guess, right, I'm not sure how to count that.
Uh, great question, uh, so when we're talking capital, because we put a separate capital fund. That's where, um, I mentioned that there's a seventeen point five million dollar capital. Project fund. Cash, uh, fund balance. Fund balance, all the capital projects are funded. Versus the surplus, that's managed by the operating. Two buckets.
Uh, Vice Mayor? I do not have any questions. Spent. Financial problems, paid everything worth. Uh, my sort of budget commitments, I have added, that's all actually explained. So. Okay. Uh, third worship.
Um, so I just have a few slides for you, right? Or it's. Right? So. Part of the, um, United House Committee House forms and one of the recommendations in the past was to buy a, a beer and a long term, a thirty-year forecast. And always prudent to produce a, a forecast, um, obviously, there's many variables that goes into projecting out five years. I always say more than two, three years is probably the best guess, once you go out five years, but I try to use a straight line method. That's probably the most simplest, but also at the same time, I think that's more reachable, so. First two columns on the left is just our current budget, our revised budget versus our, what I just presented, also regards how, how we're going to end the year. At two point three million dollars. Now looking up to next year, um, I'm projecting a revenue of thirty-four million. And I'm sure to lean with the surplus of one point seven. And a subsequent year to that, twenty-four, twenty-five, another, um. Thirty-four million versus thirty-three million in expenditures with the surplus of one. Then you look out to the out year beyond that, twenty-five, twenty-six, yeah. Deficit in a sense, negative two point seven, and then a negative two point eight per, so. Let me just walk you through, um, the methodology. First and foremost, our public safety parcel tax, which, um, brings in additional three point five million dollars in property tax. That's is going to sunset in twenty-four, twenty-five. And in my projection, I leave that amount off. In the past, um, there was a discussion, should you keep that in? I like to keep that proportion out, that's not a guarantee. I like to keep that out, and hence, you see twenty-five, twenty-six, and twenty-six, twenty-seven fiscal years as a negative. Missing that big chunk of three point five. Now, if we, I walk you backwards to twenty-four, twenty-five, and twenty-three, twenty-four, a surplus. Um, this is really a conservative look. And also at the same time, you notice that the revenues overall is not increasing in twenty-four, twenty-five versus twenty-three, twenty-four. And really, that's because, as I mentioned, that ARPA, uh, money, the one-time revenue, that eventually we spent all that. Uh, three point one million dollars, even though our projected property tax would go up by four point five, maybe five percent. Because we're going to see a big decrease in revenues from that three point one million dollars that we got from the federal government, still flattens. But overall, I do believe that these numbers are very conservative and it's, um, it will most likely change as we go through the budget process. Long-term financial projections, I know in the staff report, I believe it's eight hundred and twelve, hundred and thirteen. There's just a lot of numbers on there, and instead of just projecting that upon a screen. I digest that in a, right here, please. So what we're looking at here is the red line is the baseline, meaning a balanced budget, being revenues over expenditures equals zero. You always want to have a balanced budget, so, um, both courses to have a certain. The blue line is my anticipated surplus that I calculated. And there's just a couple of items that I wanted to highlight for the council. Um, in fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four, you will be paying off our pension obligation bond, our only one debt. That, of course, will, um, mean that we're going to be saving a half a million dollars in expenditures. Moving forward after twenty twenty-four, so you see a little bump regards to revenue. But the surplus will grow now in twenty-four, twenty-five is the last year of the parcel tax. And my assumption is that if the parcel tax does not pass, this, this graph is showing the assumption of parcel tax not passing. And of course, that three point five million dollar is not there, and we, in a sense, would go into a deficit. What does that mean is that we will be drawing down on our reserves technically if we don't have that parcel. And then if you go back all the way out to fiscal year twenty, thirty-eight, thirty-nine. That, that's when CalPERS anticipates our pension. Are decreasing considerably as majority of the classic members of the CalPERS system, uh, would, would have retired or moved on. And the new, uh, more affordable PEP reform, which, um, will be more, less costly for the city will kick in. That will see a benefit, that will bring city technically back to, um, being positive or surplus. And as I mentioned, this is with the assumption that the parcel tax never passes, you know, on twenty-four, twenty. It doesn't look dressed, um, it, it looks dire, but really depends, of course, on that crucial parcel. Um, this slide here is for our fiscal year end, the motion that the council will be making tonight. When we've ended the fiscal year, eh, on June thirty, twenty twenty-two, these are audited numbers, we end the year at sixteen point three million dollars in fund balance reserve. Then we hold on to our forty percent reserve. Then we hold on to our forty percent reserve that should have probably been first for the. I bet forty percent reserve at four point four million, and then we also keep an additional reserve of one point two five. Then the net difference will be on the operating side. We had a surplus of three point five million dollars. Then the council has can go ahead and move this money, which we have historic for the past four years, I believe. The C I P fund to invest into future. Last slide is just a quick summary and a recap. Fiscal year twenty two, twenty three status, we are on budget um as. Um as I mentioned, my presentation, our year end surplus is anticipated to be two point three to two point six million dollars. At the five year uh financial forecast, as I mentioned, the pension obligation bond we paid off in fiscal year twenty three, twenty four, with the savings of half a million dollars. The public safety parcel tax is sunset in fiscal year twenty five, twenty six. And our expenditures are rising faster than our revenue. That is something to consider as we go into our budget process here. And lastly, long term financial forecast. The public safety parcel tax with the sunset in fiscal year twenty five, twenty six, but also in that forecast, I mean. I didn't highlight that this item, but in fiscal year thirty four, thirty five, the street rehab program. Supposed to be going into maintenance mode, which should cause the city less money. Now, I've actually met with the Public Works Director and. In the near future, we will be coming back to council regardless of any kind of changes regards to this schedule. So we should have a better forecast regards to what that maintenance schedule probably haven't looked like. And lastly, as I mentioned, the pension obligation. Pension U A L or the um funded root liability for pension. That is forecasted to decrease in costs for the city out in thirty. That concludes my presentation. I'm available.
Uh no, Dirk, thanks for meeting us. So digest. Um I think the only question I had, you kind of were just about to touch on the C I P. Um are we going to make some efforts to kind of model that out?
Yes, um it's the way I model it is meaning that we assume that we're going to spend all this year. Realistically, as you know, we carry over, C I Ps don't end in one. Whatever we budget, I tend to look at it as, let's say, hypothetically. No, no question.
How's the performance of the long term strategy, the financial committee? How are we doing compared to the forecast back then? Because right now, only trigger on and I are the remaining ones from the committee. Uh how was our forecast back here to the last four year?
That's a great question. Um.
I, uh, so, you know, figure on did a lot back then.
What I, what I can speak for is that um. The hot committee did recommend great recommendations with the stability and the finances of the city. Um providing a long term forecast, thirty years is probably excessive, but I think it gives a good picture of where we are, the importance of. Of our public safety parts of excellence, example, now regards to comparison of four years ago, I can't speak for that, but I do know that. Um the the overall, we look at cash balance. And we report to the council monthly, but on a quarterly basis. It's been higher. Now, of course, that has a tie in regards to how much we're spending on the capital side, but. Overall, we've, we've seen revenues grow and expenditures. They're controlled. Now, obviously, as I mentioned, expenditures in the last couple of years have seen some uptick, and that is something that I do. Do we spend all the the funding for capital, you know, like street pavement and all that? Hmm yes and no, in the sense that regardless of streets, we've actually rolled over from last year. And I think maybe that has to do with some of the, we just had a new director come on board, but. Technically, we aside three point five million dollars in street we have. But this year alone, we have a budget of seven million dollars, we have, and that's because last year. No, my work directors previously working on getting the streets.
Would you, uh you have a slide there that talked about one point two five percent of the. General funds are added every year to reserve. And that's by the policy that we created.
That's not our fiscal policy, but that was one of the ad hoc committees recommend.
I, I, I just wanted to make sure that I recall that. And secondly, so that, what is forty percent? That is our policy is recalculated every year.
Here, once we get our audited final numbers from the audit group. We can add it out regards to forty percent reserve plus that one point two five reserve.
Okay.
Whatever's remaining is this or your ask this clear.
Yeah, is there ever be a recommendation? Are those funds into the? Trust we created for CalPERS, you're not recommending that.
So we. Since we've approved the, there's two trusts, there's the pension trust and then the. I really health. When the O P A trust was approved, um we, we, meaning the council approved that every year when we have a surplus. The hundred thousand was going to be set aside, long as the public safety parcel tax is um. Is in effect. So basically. The that three point five million dollars is net of the hundred thousand dollars.
What about the other trust?
The pension trust fund, we opened it with a million dollars. We haven't put in additional. Yes, I, I would say. The way the, just the whole market has been, because it's a market driven um trust fund, meaning the returns that we get. I just felt that. Probably good to be prudent and just wait to see, and then maybe this coming end of fiscal year, we can revisit that. Let's see if we can put more money. Our investments have been yielding rather well, four point five percent. At this point, we felt that having the cash will be makes worse.
I have no further questions. I will open up for public comment. Is there a public comment here in the room?
Can you give Zoom participants a moment to raise their hand? Not seeing any requests for a comment, sorry.
Okay, thank you. Um we'll close public comment and. I will bring it back. If there's any further discussion, how's we go? Do you have anything further? We're low.
No, I just want to thank and echo the sentiments. Um well done, and I appreciated that we did this as well as the presentation. That is very helpful. So those could be uploaded. And also want to take a look later. I don't know how you could do that, but make that successful. Um that was very helpful for everybody.
Yeah, so thanks to Tricia on, uh Director on.
Yeah, also, thank you very much. Uh I will entertain a motion. There is a very detailed motion. Um in order to, so someone would like to make the motion.
Want to receive and file the fiscal year twenty twenty two, twenty three, mid year financial review. Updated five year financial forecast and long term financial projections, our report approved a transfer of. Three point five million to the capital projects on general fund reserves. And approved the budget amendments as noted in staff report. Second.
There's been a motion in second. It comes from the general fund reserves.
Councilmember Joe.
Yes.
Councilmember Lo. Councilmember Shepherd Ronnie.
Yes.
Ice Mary Wong.
Yes.
Mayor Toms.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you very much. Let's move on to the consent calendar. Is there uh any council members wish to pull any items?
Yes, I'm item number fourteen.
I. Is there anyone else? Okay, is there a motion upon seven to thirteen? Second. Uh it's been moved in second. Oh, is there any comment on the concerned calendar?
No, I did not receive any request for a comment.
Great. Um which might be easier. Um so it's been moved the second uh to. The items number seven through uh thirteen. Full call please.
Councilmember Joe.
Yes.
Councilmember Lo.
Yes.
Councilmember Shepherd Ronnie. Ice Mary Wong.
Yes.
Mayor Toms.
Yes. Item number fourteen, people of temporary closure.
Yes, so I just.
About this. But she's up there. Um so. Community engagement manager.
Thank you. Uh so before we make your proposal from the Good Center run of Pasadena to use Lacy Park for a five K, I believe this will be their. Third time hosting this park, uh this, this run at Lacy Park. Uh this item was actually previously approved in September of last year for October. Um unfortunately, due to other scheduling of other major events that the Gooden Center had, they were not able to hold that run in October, so this is kind of the reschedule to. March. Um the Gooden Center has been, from what I understand, because I've not been here for one of their runs yet, but has been excellent stewardess of the park. And I'm happy to take any questions.
Is any customer have any question? Okay, um.
I, I have a question.
Yeah, okay.
Meeting number is exactly the same as what they have done in past years, or has. You said this, this, the third, I, I'm sorry, I don't know. Either I know that it started a couple of years ago, and then COVID had had. We have restricted users, etc. These stuff. I'm just wondering how many, and has it always been the same, or have there been changes over as they requested the city or?
So uh this year does have one, one additional request, which is the route uh that you'll see is a little bit different. In years previous, the route has only been contained within the park. Um the recommendation that includes a um the motion to. Close the park isn't actually quite the correct language. It's the most fitting language we have for our current policy. Um because I, as I understand, the run has never actually turned anybody away from usage of the parks. Some normal park users who come in and just passively use the park in the early mornings, they have never turned anybody away. However, what we are doing is staff is not collecting fees for the first two hours of the park would normally be open. So any non residents who come in, um you don't have the staffing to basically differentiate between runners. Residents and non residents, um as we just did the Lunar New Year where we were still doing that. That was about a six or seven hundred dollar endeavor to have staff kind of do that, and it was a big undertaking for us. This is a, a smaller event from what I understand, and the Good Run has basically allowed normal usage of the park while they're runners. Which is a very small amount of runners that I understand from, uh, she can contrast that this is a relatively smaller five K. Um so that's the same idea would be continuing this year. That we are recommending a closure in terms of we're handing it over to the Gooden Center for the first two hours of the day. And then staff would come in at nine and we would open the park as regular. Yes, yeah. So that is the, so the fee that you'll see, which was the same fee that was approved in September, calculates the cost, because we do have to. Uh cancel all rentals, because they essentially take over most of the rental space that would normally be used during those hours. So it's a partial calculation of the cost of what all of those rentals would cost. And the estimated fees that we would collect on a normal Saturday, or in this case, Sunday, uh weekend for non residents.
Do they typically also uh use all the parking lots?
Uh they would typically use uh that front parking lot. That's kind of the main parking lot by the entrance. Um it's also recommended that even if they weren't using that for volunteer check in, that we close that simply because. The influx of people mixed with cars using that main entrance, uh what I understand is a little bit of a safety hazard. And again, we were really grateful for Lunar New Year that we had also closed that, I see influx of people into the park on major events. It's a little bit frightening to have cars. That is a standard practice that we for community service events as well. If you're going to have a large influx of. People walking into the park, you don't want cars going in that major park parking lot as well. Um I don't believe that that is part of the.
Oh, yes, um. Um I was just concerned with the uh foreclosure of the park, so I just want to make sure it's not. If the resident still has access to it, and perhaps if you can come back with a better arrangement, a better policy for the future.
I would be happy to do that. It has been uh one of those things that I think. It's, it's kind of a great area sometimes between what is just a very large rental and what is a full special event. So we, I think staff would be more than happy uh to bring back some, some brainstorming and proposals for a special amount policy. Particularly for Lacy Park, but also throughout the rest of the city as well.
Thank you.
If you, is there any public item on?
Thank you. Zoom participants, moment. Not seeing anybody in the room. Not seeing any raised hands. Yes, that is.
Well, I'm just a little concerned about that.
And still see no raised hands for comments.
Making sure. Um thank you. Um I will bring it back. Anybody have any further?
Uh just want to add on to Vice Mayor's comment on maybe, you know, a work on process for this so that. Getting more events run through, so want to make sure we're, we're fairly dealing with everybody.
All right, anyone else?
Um and all of that as well. There are also, because of city usage, I see Director Johnson there and the. Of quite a few um of my. Events being added to the city's calendar. I'm, I'm also a resident in the area as well as a city by outside.
Staffing for these events is also concerned.
Anyone else? Okay, I will entertain a motion on item number fourteen.
I move to authorize the temporary closure of Lacy Park on March twenty six, twenty twenty three for the Good Incentive Run for Recovery.
For saying. Move the second full call.
Councilmember Joe.
Yes.
Councilmember Lo.
Yes.
Councilmember Shepherd Ronnie.
Yes.
Vice Mary Wong.
Yes.
Mayor Toms.
Yes.
Motion passes.
You have any written communications or public writings? See none. Is there one wishing to speak at this time on a matter? For public comment, as a reminder, we're not legally. Want to hear one of?
Not seeing any raised hands from Zoom.
Uh see none. Is there anyone wish, uh pardon me, do any council members have a special? Any council member have a special?
Yes, um I'd like to adjourn this meeting. Uh memory of the, the victims in Turkey and Syria, and that hopefully will never happen to us now.
Um I, anyone else have a special journey? Uh I adjourn today's regular meeting. Uh subject to this special. Um through Friday, February twenty fourth at nine thirty A M. At the bar for in cruel public.
In the joint planning, planning commission meeting before.